The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For tonight's invocation, I'd just like to say a prayer. The Godfather, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you.
Could you please call the roll?
Present.
Commissioner Walls?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
We have a second and support. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards or recognitions coming before the board. Any communications or petitions may be presented at this time to the clerk. Seeing none. We have no special orders or public hearings. Now arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are very simple. Each individual will state their name. They have up to three minutes to speak to the board. All comments and conversations shall be directed at the board. The board will only listen at this time. There will be no debate, and you may not yield your time to someone else, and you may only speak one time under this public comment. Anyone like to speak under public comment, please?
I'm Robert Wilson. I'm the chair for Jackson County, sanctuary county. It's a Facebook group that started out on Christmas Day with two people on Christmas Day. Since then, we are over, well over 80,000 people. We have chairs in every Michigan county. Some of these counties are already considering a resolution. I'll be leaving these here, a resolution. Every county will pretty much receive the same resolution. We have also been in contact with local law enforcement to get their assurances that they will uphold to their oath of protecting the people from unconstitutional laws such as the red flag laws, and that's why we're here, make this county a two-way sanctuary We have been assured that they will do just that. We want it known to the governor as well, and all politicians in this state, that we refuse to be punished for the actions of criminals. We will not sit back and allow what happened in Virginia to happen here in Michigan. Our goal is very simple. We are working to make all counties in the state of Michigan sanctuary counties for the Second Amendment. Yes, we do expect resistance from other gun-grabbing groups, probably at the next meeting. But we will not stop or rest until our task is realized. We are asking you to think about what the people in this county would want you to do with this resolution. I can assure you, we already know. I can also assure you that we will not just sit back and watch what happened in Virginia happen to Michigan. We very much appreciate you giving our resolution the proper attention it deserves, and would ask you to please vote the way that the majority of the citizens would want you to vote. Thank you. Just leave these here.
Mr. Chair, can I move to accept his petition that he missed in the petition portion?
At this time, David, we'd agree the information should be turned over to the clerk. If you please could present it to the clerk and stack it right here, please. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Julie Alexander, Hanover Township resident. Honored to be serving as Jackson County's 64th District State Representative, serving the communities of the city of Jackson and eight surrounding townships. Hanover, Concord, Palaski, Spring Arbor, Sandstone, Parma, Summit, and Napoleon. Chair Chatwell and members of the Jackson County Board of Commission. It seems like yesterday I found myself sitting in the same chair as you are sitting today. Serving on the Board of Commission for six years provided many opportunities for me to educate myself on the policy and budget-making process, enhance my listening skills, and finally, but most importantly, advocate for those I serve. Today, I stand before you, asking you to uphold your oath of Michigan and U.S. Constitution, that oath to that Michigan and U.S. Constitution by supporting the resolution to declare Jackson County as a Second Amendment sanctuary county. An active and engaged community is needed to ensure elected officials are held accountable. Tonight's presentation of this resolution, provided by this grassroots effort made up of Jackson's law-abiding citizens, is impressive. With the increased conversations on gun confiscation lately at a state and a national level, Michigan residents are nervous. As your state representative, I will continue to be a strong advocate for the Constitution and the Second Amendment. I will not support legislation that infringes on these rights. I now ask you, Jackson Board of Commission, to place your support behind the oath you took and uphold our Constitution as you consider the resolution presented you.
Any other public comment?
My name's Jack Kulas, born and raised in Jackson, Michigan. Our Governor Whitmer has joined a group of her and 11 other governors to pass stricter gun laws. Now, seven of these states with these governors are already in the top 10 for strictest gun laws in the nation. Michigan is number 11. There are 11 of the 12 that are in the top 18 that have the strictest gun laws in the nation. These states also have some of the most dangerous cities in the country. It would be Chicago, Oakland, California, Stockton, California, Newark, New Jersey, Detroit, and so on. Obviously, criminals do not follow the laws that are placed now. Any new laws that she's trying to pass, which I have those on paper here, too, they're not going to follow either. So what right do they have to tell us what we can and cannot protect our families and our homes with?
Good evening. John Wilson, City of Jackson. Tonight, the county board as a whole will vote on three recommendations that were passed along from the General Government Committee to appoint, reappoint, three county parks board members. I applied for the county parks board back in early December. And just in case, those of you who aren't on the county government affairs committee, my name on the application is Charles Wilson. That's my first name. I go by John. Anyways, the reason I have applied for this county parks board for the second time is because of my passion for the county parks, and also to provide fiscal oversight, especially the fiscal oversight that's needed to follow those mileage, county parks mileage dollars to be spent where they're supposed to be spent as advertised. At a risk, and I understand I won't get the majority of votes to be placed on this board, but I still wanted to come in front of you. I don't know if the other candidates for the county parks board are here tonight. Maybe they just feel that it's a sure thing that this county board will appoint them. Again, I know the county parks board passed along their recommendations, and I wasn't one of the recommendations, but I still wanted to come in front of the full board to introduce myself as applicant for the county board, county parks board. Again, you can go with the status quo, rubber stamp the approval by that committee, and follow the lead of the chair by approving what the chair wants, or you can go out on a limb and vote as you should vote, as an informed commissioner, and not just rubber stamp what the county chairman wants, or the recommendation from the five members, four of the five members, three of the five members maybe, of that governing, the general government affairs committee. So anyways, I ask that you consider my name as an appointment for the county parks board. I think you all know my passion for the county parks, and again, I promise to provide the fiscal oversight as a county parks board member that is definitely needed.
Any other public comment?
Peter Boermit. I wanted to comment a little bit on a general level of anxiety among the American people that I believe is being created by the news media, by the television and by the Internet, because they always emphasize crime. But actually, today, if you live in a suburb or one of the townships that Julie Alexander serves, you are safer today than you were in 1980. But you have more anxiety today, and you are more afraid because of the constant series of images that the news media projects into your mind when that television and that Internet are on. And there's this constant black face, and underneath it, there's some crime, or there's this person being taken away in handcuffs, and the reporter's at the scene, and you know, there are the flashing bubbles in the background. They are creating a reality in your mind and in your attitudes that make you afraid when you don't need to be. Crime is low, has been on a 20-year decline in this country, violent crime. So I just want to say that so that people recognize how you're being manipulated by the nine companies that own all our news media today.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. You have the minutes of the December meeting. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and support. Kennedy and serious. Corrections, deletions, or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Arrived at the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion for the consent agenda.
Okay.
I have a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Like to pull consent items 11B and C.
Okay. We'll move those under general government regular items. They become B and C under the standing committee. Any other items for separation? Any questions? Madam Clerk, would you mind? Oh, please.
Carrie Anne, it's not popping up for me if you vote yes.
It isn't for me either, but yes. Yes, I've ended. Consent agenda passed. We've now arrived at standing committees. Public Safety and Transportation chaired by Vice Chairman David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only bit of business tonight is an appointment. It's the Community Corrections Advisory Board. The current member is Colleen Sullivan, or was Colleen Sullivan. Will Forgrave is the applicant, and he is also the committee recommendation. It's noteworthy, this is a City of Jackson pick that we just endorse.
Do I have a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Tell I had to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Dr. Alan Tompkins. Commissioner Tompkins.
Um, it's not on here. Just one second.
Yes, I do, sir. The only item that's up at this time is the Human Services Coordinating Alliance. The member is Dr. Alan Tompkins. Applicant is Dr. Alan Tompkins. Committee recommendation is Dr. Alan Tompkins. This is a seat that is designated to be the chair of the Human Services Committee. I need a second, please. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to apologize for this because it's not on my computer. So I looked at it this afternoon, and it was, but now it is not, so I apologize.
Thank you, sir. Not a problem. And no, Phil, you can't use that as an excuse. At this time, the general government appointments chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have one appointment, that being Parks Board. This was improperly done last month's meeting, we found out. We currently have a park board member serving. Park Board Member is Jan Sights. She is serving, this term will run through 12 of 22. We have applicants, Sights, Cory Richardson, Roger Gady, and Charles Wilson. The committee had recommended Jan Sights.
Any other nominations from the floor?
Nominate Charles Wilson.
Any other nominations from the floor? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bear?
All right. I got the right one up. Jan Sights.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Kennedy?
Charles Wilson.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Elwell?
Jan Sights.
Chairman Chatwell?
Jan Sights. Jan Sights wins 5-4. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 15B is the revision of policy 4040.
Entertain a motion? Support a motion? Yes. Looking for support? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first apologize for not coming to committee to address this at the committee level. I don't serve on that particular committee, but should have been there. I'm opposed to this. I have talked to both yourself, Mike, and Deb, the deputy administrator, and I think it's a slight change from the way we've done things up until now. The public would present a petition to the clerk, and then typically, the item would get handed out. Now, we're going to be moving to being left on the podium, and commissioners can take them at their leisure, I guess. And if I understand it correctly, the items will be placed by the clerk in a file as part of the record of the meeting, but would not necessarily be posted online, if I understand it correctly. My biggest objection to this policy is, as I've said consistently since we looked at it before, is I object to some things being kept as a permanent record. And I think back to presentations we've had before, and I've shared with Commissioner Williams, one particular one that I have a copy of tonight, that I just think have no place in our board minutes or board permanent record. Certainly, the public has a right to get up here and tell us anything they want. I don't necessarily think we should have to make a part of the permanent record anything anybody wants to hand us. And the example I've given to Mike Overton is, what if the public comes up and gives us pornographic images? Then we're obligated, apparently, to keep those as a permanent part of the record here. And I object to that, me personally. Anything else is pretty much fair game. There's a few exceptions, probably. And again, the public can come up and tell us anything they want, and we'll listen to them. So I don't so much mind the slight change in the policy, which is placing them on the podium or the table. I object to this policy of just automatically we have to vote to accept everything. I disagree with that. I think it's bad advice that we've got, and I don't like having to follow it. But on the same note, when it comes to this resolution that was placed here tonight, I was fortunate enough to talk to a couple of the gentlemen from this group, so I know some of what the resolution says, but I would have liked to have seen it. And I still think we should have that ability to look at it, so when it comes time for Commissioner comment at the end of the meeting, I might have some comments on it. So I don't like it for both of those reasons, so I'll be voting no on it, short of it being changed. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Yes, sir.
Thank you for acknowledging me, Mr. Chair. I would concur with Commissioner Elwell on this subject. In fact, I emailed all the commissioners, as well as Mike, this afternoon with my settlement summit. I really feel like if we are going to accept it, and it's going to go into record, then we should also be privy to the information that's going in the record. I agree, we've had a couple of occasions where things were submitted to us that we may not personally agree with, but I think that if we're going to accept it into our public record, that we should also be given a copy of it, or some type of measure could be put in place to where we could review that document and maybe come back in the following meeting to officially accept it into record in some way, shape, or form. We could figure that out, but the way that it's written currently, I will not be in support as well.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Bear? I agree. Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Elwell and Commissioner Mahoney. No point repeating their comments. I would like somebody to show me, where am I missing the words that it would be placed in permanent record? I don't see those words anywhere. What paragraph do I need to look at? Commissioner Elwell?
If I can address Commissioner Bear directly. Tony, I don't think it's in specifically in the policy, but the reality of it is that that is what the clerk does, and I think it's probably her obligation to do that. If we make a motion to accept something, it then becomes a permanent part of the record. Mike, would you agree with that?
Yes, that's correct. If it's not illegal materials, when someone comes to the podium, they have free speech. Written documents are also considered free speech. We need to be careful of choosing to accept something or not accept something based on whether we like the content. If it doesn't violate the law, it needs to be in the record that they submitted it, just as if they would have said it. That's the advice of our attorney.
Commissioner Bear, we're left off with you. You have any further comments? Are we going to attempt to reword this this evening, so people in agreement, or just voting up or down on the way it is presented? Mr. Bear, if you feel that it could be tailored so it would work, you may make a motion to that effect, postponing the decision and returning it to the Administrator Controller's Then he would return with it after 30 days or 60 days, however you would like to set that timeframe for him. I would like that approach. I would like to just return this to the Administrator Controller, bring it up again at the standing committee meeting, and have a little longer debate on this.
Support.
We have a motion and support on the floor. There's no debate to this motion because it's a postponement. Are you happy with February Standing Committee meeting, sir? Using that as the postponement date, the February Standing Committee of the Board of Commissioners, Monday morning. Anyone have, are you happy with it? All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one more item in the general government agenda tonight, and that would be the review of policy 3340. I'd like to bring that forward.
We have a motion. Do we have support? We have support for discussion. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one that I've objected to a couple of times, and it's been sent back at least once, I think. And it has been tweaked at least once. And my main objection to it is, it's my belief that every employee that's hired by the county, the county should know whether or not they have a valid driver's license. And I think one of the responses to that in discussions that we've had is that it would be improper to make a determination on whether to hire a specific person based on whether they have a driver's license. I'm fine with that. My opinion is, decide how you're going to hire them, or if you're going to hire them, and then after they become an employee, check their driving status. Doesn't mean you terminate them if they don't have a license. You just simply make a note, or their direct supervisor does, so they do not end up driving either a county vehicle, or while they're working on behalf of county business, because it puts us at risk. We sit in closed session after closed session over stupid lawsuits, and it just seems so simple to me to do. Again, don't base... Again, don't base the hiring decision on it, but after you've decided who you're going to hire, see if they have a valid license or not. If they do, great. If they don't, then you just simply make a note, so they don't drive. You don't ask them to run something to the post office, or run something out to the airport. And it'll save us in the end, in my opinion. So, I'll be voting no on this one as well.
Commissioner Tompkins.
I just, I'm curious that if you have a position open that requires driving, why would you consider hiring someone who doesn't drive, who doesn't have a license?
If I can answer him directly, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Doc, you wouldn't, because the wording of this says if your position requires driving, then that's part of what they check beforehand. For instance, if you work for JDOT, you're obviously going to drive, they automatically check that, and that's appropriate. But if your position is some subordinate position down the line that doesn't entail regular driving, then you would not check it before you decide whether to hire them, you'd check it afterwards. And if they don't have a license, you just tell them, no driving on county business or county vehicles.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious if possibly Mike may know what the financial impact would be if we did decide to check driving record for, or license, valid license for all employees in an amendment to this, to the update of this policy.
Yeah, the cost is incidental. There's no real true additional cost for that. Frankly, the only reason it is written the way it is written is unless they're required to drive for their position, we put ourselves in a position, as our attorneys say, you know, how people get to work is really not our business, unless they have to drive for the county, and then that's the case, we check their driver's license. And additionally, while we may check Monday, on Tuesday, they may lose their license, and it was in process, and we would just wouldn't know that. There is a, where it's incumbent upon a person to follow the law. If they've lost their license, and someone were to ask them to drive, one would hope that they would say, you know, I can't, and we're not going to check people's license every time. It wouldn't be practical before I send someone, if you will, to pick something up at the airport to check whether they have a license or not. That's the only reason. It can be either way, it's not a great detriment. It's just that legal counsel says that if someone doesn't get a job, and they choose to sue us, and they, for some reason, because people choose to do all kinds of things, were to say, well, you didn't hire me because I don't have a driver's license. That may not very well be true, but now I have to defend against that when it's not a requirement of the job, is the only challenge on that.
Mr. Duckham.
Well, first of all, there's a very simple way to find out if they got a driver's license, and that's, in my business, I get a copy of their ID, so I know who they are, and there's their driver's license. Now, also, in the trucking industry, it's federal law that if they lose their license or get a ticket, they have to report it to me, as a business owner. I would think it would be much the same for the county. And if we get the license, a copy of the license, if they don't tell us that they've lost it, at least I believe we're off the hook, because they didn't follow the law and inform us. So, I would definitely want to know. If I've got a garbage truck out running down the road, and see a young kid jump in it and move it ahead, when the driver's standing at a different household, I want to know that he don't have a license, and he shouldn't be driving that truck. It puts me at risk. So, I think you do need to know who you could, who shouldn't be behind the wheel of your vehicles.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Mahoney, are you going to propose a motion, a motion, or are you going to, an amendment, or are you going to?
I would prefer to table it to send it back under the same guidelines as the last policy.
Is that's a postponement?
Yes.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Elwell. Do I have support? I have support. So, we're going to postpone this to the February Monday Standing Committee meeting, correct?
Correct.
Everyone's comfortable with that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Duckham.
That will be all tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business at this time. We've arrived at new business. Need new business to come before the board? At this time, I'm going to take chair prerogative and make the community be aware of that we've received this document and have submitted it to legal counsel for review, and that it will be coming back in February for a vote. So, we're already online to do everything you've asked us to do at this time. We've been in communication with the state through Representative Alexander's office also, and we'll continue that conversation. So, this will reappear next month. So, just so everyone knows. We've arrived at public comment second time. This is a two-minute public comment, same rules apply. Please state your name. Please plan, please address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment, and you may do so at
Evening. Jack Kuhles again. As you see, we have quite a bit of support for the Second Amendment Sanctuary County here. This is not black versus white, this is not red versus blue. This is what's right and what's wrong. We're here to stand up for what we believe in, and what we think is wrong by state officials trying to ban firearms from good, law-abiding, responsible gun owners, which is us. As I alluded to earlier, the criminals will still have their weapons, we need a way to protect ourselves, whether it be from a pistol, or a rifle, or a shotgun. That's it.
Any other public comment?
Yes, Larry Lewis, and I'm here to speak on the same subject, but I would like to point out, everything's pretty much been said, except for things, the few things, the red flag laws that they're pushing right now. I mean, that is eliminating due process of the American citizens and the Michigan citizens. It is unfair by our constitution. I don't know if any of you are aware of this, I don't know if any of you've thought about this, but if you make 30-round magazines illegal, the only people that are going to be illegal are the law-abiding citizens. Anybody can make a 30-round magazine that has a 3D printer. Anybody. Any machinist can make an AR-15. There's, I know hundreds of them in this town, that could actually sit down and make an AR-15. So, you're not going to do anything any good to keep the guns out of the hands of criminals. All you're going to do is take them away from the law-abiding citizen. And that's why we propose the Second Amendment Sanctuary County.
Any other public comment? Commissioner Comments? Commissioner Elwell.
Just appreciate the county residents coming out to speak to this issue tonight. I got a call from two of them, I appreciate the good conversation from both of them, and look forward to addressing the resolution at our next meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also appreciate you guys coming out, supporting our Second Amendment rights. You have a firm supporter here. It's the Second Amendment, it's in our Bill of Rights, so I understand that that's the people's rights, and that's where government is hands-off. And that's how I look at it, and you got my support. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Commissioner Mahoney, then Commissioner Bear.
Just a quick comment. Just wanted to publicly say I'm happy to see Phil here tonight, and also just bring realization to our public of how close we actually are. Even if we may disagree fundamentally on the things that we vote on here, I think that I can say with confidence that everybody on this board, because we spend so much time with each other, has a very close relationship and a lot of love for each other. And, you know, we often talk about how we may disagree here in the decisions that we make, but we can still walk out and be friends at the end of the day. Because at the end of the day, I think we all want the same thing, which is to see a better Jackson.
Commissioner Bear.
I'm a strong Second Amendment supporter, I'm glad you're here, glad to see all of Got a question for the, I represent the Jackson County on the Region 2 Area Agency on Aging. That agency is currently looking at buying some additional, an office. They're running out of space in their existing building. If they buy the new building, they're going to need it renovated, their existing building's going to need to be renovated. They're at the programming phase right now. Our Lifeways group recently went through a programming effort that appears to have been very successful for expanding and renovating their building. Can we have the staff from Lifeways share that programming methodology that they were successful with, with the Region 2 Area Agency on Aging?
Are you a member of that board?
Lifeways?
No. Area on Aging.
No. Yes, I am. They're the Region 2 Area, yes, I'm a member.
Dr. Tompkins, you're a member of Lifeways?
Yes.
Introduce you to Tony Bear. The two of you can have a cup of coffee sometime?
Hi, Tony. I'd like to have some coffee.
Yes, definitely. The two of you can get together, can get the practical and get the matrices together and make that happen.
Okay. Thank you for-
Yes, sir.
-letting those agencies share that.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy?
I'd also like to thank the public, and obviously, I'll be in support of defending our Second Amendment. There's no way I would ever give up my firearms. It's our constitutional right, so I have my full support. Other than that, I'd also like to thank the few Commissioners that came alongside tonight and gave a vote for somebody different than the status quo. I'm a firm believer that we need to get some new blood on some of these committees, and I appreciate Mr. Wilson showing up here in person tonight, and I appreciate him being passionate about fiscal oversight.
Commissioner Williams?
Good evening. I just wanted just to comment on our progress that we've made tonight, just in terms of having healthy debate and healthy discussion. We had a comment that was mentioned earlier about things not being a black issue, or a white issue, or a red or a blue issue, and I think tonight was a good representation of government working for the people. We've heard the requests, we've looked at some things, we've discussed, we've agreed, we've disagreed, yet we're still working for the solution on matters. And so, I think it was a good representation, again, of government working for the people. I just want to continue to congratulate and encourage the fellow Commissioners to continue to do the same.
Thank you, sir. Nothing further.
Any other Commissioner comments? Okay, now I'm going to try to read this. Seeing no other Commissioner comments, at this time, I entertain a motion in accordance with MCL 15.268, an attorney-client opinion for case number 5:19- is that, CV? 10797 will be discussed.
So moved.
Support. We have a motion and support. Madam Clerk, post her call, please. Would you want support? Pick one. Mahoney? Blame him.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes. Commissioners will adjourn to the chambers on the sixth floor and be returning afterwards.
I move that we accept the attorney's recommendation made in closed session for settlement on the case number noted on the agenda.